Grammarly can help you write quickly and confidently so you never have to slow down at work. Instant corrections make your writing mistake free while keeping it short, sweet, and fitting in tone. Join more than 20 million people who use Grammarly to write better every day. Go to grammarly.com to download.
Mike check one, mic check one. Mic check one, two, one, two, mic check one.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our in-person community and those who are viewing. Stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight's Spirit of Excellence Award goes to St. Louis Public Schools as one of the top three healthiest employers in St. Louis. The St. Louis Business Journal recently ranked St. Louis Public Schools' Health and Wellness Program number three among the region's largest employers. The journal explained, "The Board of Education of the City of St. Louis, which operates the St. Louis Public School System, offers a comprehensive wellness program that focuses on one's physical, social, and mental health, and it is available to all employees and spouses who are medically enrolled under the United Healthcare Insurance Plan." Congratulations to Ms. Karen Shelton Henry and our HR team. I'd like to get a motion to approve the minutes of July 7, 06:21. I'm sorry, that's August 17, 2021.
I'd move to approve the minutes of August 17, 2021.
Second.
Ms. Song-Ye.
Yes.
Ms. Cousins.
Yes.
Ms. Fowler.
Yes.
Ms. Vowell.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Dr. Roberts.
Yes.
Motion passed.
May I get a motion to approve the minutes of 09:14:21?
Move to approve the minutes of, I'm sorry, September 14, 2021?
Yes.
Second. Ms. Song-Ye.
Yes.
Ms. Cousins.
Yes.
Ms. Fowler.
Yes.
Ms. Vowell.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Dr. Roberts.
Yes.
Motion passed.
May I get a motion to approve the minutes of 09:14:21?
Move to approve the minutes of, I'm sorry, September 14, 2021?
Yes.
Second. Ms. Song-Ye.
Yes.
Ms. Cousins.
Yes.
Ms. Fowler.
Yes.
Ms. Vowell.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Dr. Roberts.
Yes.
Motion passed. Dr. Adams.
Good afternoon. In keeping with the theme of good health, the district is pleased to invite all families to the Fall Family Fitness Festival, the St. Louis Public Schools, the Parent Action Council, as well as to go St. Louis, are jointly hosting both a 5K and 1.5 mile front run on October 23, 2021, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The action kicks off and ends at Ashland Elementary School. The event will include Zumba and yoga classes for all three, for all fitness levels. Please visit www.slps.org/go for registration information. Now, let's turn the spotlight on one of our teachers. NAST third-grade teacher goes beyond and above the call of duty. Maquet McBride, a third-grade teacher at NAST Elementary, was featured during a recent KMOV Channel 4 news broadcast, which heralded her exemplary service to students and colleagues. NAST Principal Dr. Tyler Archer told Channel 4 that Ms. McBride is someone that everyone respects and is the heartbeat of the school. We're excited to celebrate Mrs. McBride. You can see more of her story on KMOV and the district's Twitter page. Lastly, a reminder that the district-wide parent-teacher conferences will begin next week, Monday, October 18 through Friday, October 22. Conferences will be 100% virtual. Please contact your school to schedule your conference time. Want to congratulate all of the persons who were recognized tonight, as well as to call out the fact that our Teacher of the Year will be honored at a banquet in Jefferson City on Tuesday night. It is our intent to attend to celebrate our Teacher of the Year, who is now a teacher at CSMB. Those are the announcements at this point in time. Our first presentation tonight will be a finance presentation, followed by the air quality presentation by Mr. Watson, but Mrs. Banks will give a monthly update, as she does at every board meeting relative to the district's finances.
Good evening, thank you. Today, I'll be going through the September 2021 financials. Just a review of our financial objectives. To maintain full accreditation, align our resources to the transformation plan, maintain long-term financial stability, and reinforce high expectations and accountability. Our agenda, we don't have a COVID update today, but we'll go through the ESER 2 spend to date, the September preliminary financials, a financial outlook, and answer any questions. So, the ESER year-to-date doesn't look much different than it did last month. We've only spent about 1.1% of the funds to date, so no new information here. Just a few more dollars on replacement technology and some overtime and extra service. Dr. Adams will be giving an ESER update later this evening. So, for our September financials, again, not a lot of changes in revenue. We're still early in the year, so primarily, we have some general operating budget revenue and Prop C sales taxes and some state revenue, some of our larger expenditures over $100,000. There are a few new items on here. The new high school Learn to Earn program, you see some expenditures there. Quite a few technology expenditures, and in human resources, some software. So, our revenues in September, we received about $8 million, $15.5 million year-to-date, or 4.1% of the revenue budget. And again, that's primarily local revenue and state revenue. Our expenditures for September, we spent about $24.7 million, $38.2 million year-to-date, or 10% of the expenditure budget. September did have two full pay periods for all staff, and the negative $2.2 million that you see in long and short-term debt is the federal interest subsidy that we receive on our Prop S funds. So, as I mentioned, very quick this evening, everything looks good. We are planning for our fiscal year 2023 budget forum. We usually do that sometime in the fall, so those dates should be upcoming. I spoke to Dr. Adams today, and we're looking at those dates, and perhaps he even has them. So, if there are any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question, I just have a request. Can we also get a summary balance sheet as well, as part of the presentation?
Yes, and just for your information, that is posted on our website, but I can certainly have it forwarded to you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Banks, are you planning on those budget forums, will they be virtual, or will they be in person, or will they be both?
That is a good question, and I think that's open at this point.
Yeah, last year, we did it in virtual because we had to. We will be working with the Health Department in terms of the requirements, but it is likely it will be a combination of both.
Okay, thanks.
There are no further questions? Thank you, Mrs. Banks.
Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
All right, good evening to the board, Dr. Adams to the listening public, Square Watson, Deputy Superintendent of Operations, joined by my team, Mr. Rosman Johnson, Facility Manager, Maintenance Manager, Mr. Anthony Graffan Reed, HVAC Manager, as well as our Environmental Consultants team led by Mr. Jeffrey Faust, Anthony Haggerty, and James Earl. And tonight, we'll be presenting the air quality report that was conducted earlier this year. Air quality came to light with the pandemic. There are three entities that provide guidance, the U.S. EPA, CDC, and OSHA, that have established standards to our schools for reopening and during the course of the year, ensuring that we protect our scholars as well as our staff. The district, as we continue and have been committed to maintain a healthy environment in which our scholars and our students can learn, our teachers can teach, and our staff can have a safe environment to work in. The quality of air, the testing of water, and interim controls for lead are always regularly tested, and any issues, they are corrected, repaired, and/or eliminated. So therefore, ethics and accountability are our highest priority. Alongside with the team, we are able to provide documentation that shows all of our actions. And this information can generally be reviewed through a Sunshine Request so that the public can see those items. So, as opposed to what makes a building unhealthy, what makes a building healthy? Increasing ventilation. Our HVAC equipment and our operation, making sure that our HVAC equipment are operational and within the lifespan of the equipment, as well as providing a preventative maintenance plan to ensure that all of our systems work appropriately. The other items are upgrading our filters to a MERV rating, in which the MERV rating captures the filters and the contaminants within those filters. The other item is automation. This allows us to provide controls and monitor the temperatures and humidity levels within our schools and within our classrooms. Other items are to reduce the transmission of the virus, which are generally found from the three entities, the CDC, U.S. EPA, and OSHA, and they are the face mask wearing, the social distancing, continuously disinfecting and sanitizing of our classrooms as well as our equipment, and continuing to replace our filters.
Ms. Song Ye.
Yes.
Ms. Cousins.
Yes.
Ms. Fowler.
Yes.
Ms. Faoul.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Dr. Roberts.
Yes.
Motion passed. Dr. Adams.
Good afternoon. In keeping with the theme of good health, the district is pleased to invite all families to the Fall Family Fitness Festival, the St. Louis Public Schools, the Parent Action Council, as well as to Go St. Louis are jointly hosting both their 5K and 1.5 mile fun run on October 23rd, 2021 from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The action kicks off and ends at Ashland Elementary School. The event will include some Zumba and yoga classes for all three, for all fitness levels. Please visit www.slps.org/go for registration information. Now let's turn the spotlight on one of our teachers. NAST third grade teacher goes beyond and above the call of duty. Moquette McBride, a third grade teacher at NAST Elementary was featured during a recent KMOV Channel 4 News broadcast, which heralded her exemplary service to students and colleagues. NAST Principal Dr. Tyler Archer told Channel 4 that Ms. McBride is someone that everyone respects and is the heartbeat of the school. We're excited to celebrate Mrs. McBride. You can see more of her story on KMOV and the district's Twitter page. Lastly, a reminder that the district-wide parent-teacher conferences will begin next week, Monday, October 18th to Friday, October 22nd. Conferences will be 100% virtual. Please contact your school to schedule your conference time. Want to congratulate all of the persons who were recognized tonight, as well as to call out the fact that our Teacher of the Year will be honored at a banquet in Jefferson City on Tuesday night. It is our intent to attend to celebrate our Teacher of the Year, who is now a teacher at CSMB. Those are the announcements at this point in time. Our first presentation tonight will be a finance presentation, followed by the air quality presentation by Mr. Watson. But Mrs. Banks will give a monthly update, as she does at every board meeting relative to the district's finances.
Good evening. Thank you. Today I'll be going through the September 2021 financials. Just a review of our financial objectives. To maintain full accreditation, align our resources to the transformation plan, maintain long-term financial stability, and reinforce high expectations and accountability. Our agenda, we don't have a COVID update today, but we'll go through the SRR2 spend to date, the September preliminary financials, a financial outlook, and answer any questions. So the SRR year-to-date doesn't look much different than it did last month. We've only spent about 1.1% of the funds to date, so no new information here, just a few more dollars on replacement technology and some overtime and extra service. Dr. Adams will be giving an SRR update later this evening. So for our September financials, again, not a lot of changes in revenue. We're still early in the year, so primarily we have some general operating budget revenue and Prop C, sales taxes, and some state revenue, some of our larger expenditures over $100,000. There are a few new items on here. The new high school Learn to Earn program, you see some expenditures there, quite a few technology expenditures, and in human resources, some software. So our revenues in September, we received about $8 million, $15.5 million year-to-date, or 4.1% of the revenue budget. And again, that's primary, primarily local revenue and state revenue. Our expenditures for September, we spent about $24.7 million, $38.2 million year-to-date, or 10% of the expenditure budget. September did have two full pay periods for all staff, and the negative $2.2 million that you see in long and short-term debt is the federal interest subsidy that we receive on our Prop S funds. So as I mentioned, very quick this evening, everything looks good. We are planning for our fiscal year 2023 budget forum. We usually do that sometime in the fall, so those dates should be upcoming. Spoke to Dr. Adams today, and we're looking at those dates, and perhaps he even has them. So if there are any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question. I was just, I just have a request. Can we also get a summary balance sheet as well as part of the presentation?
Yes. And just for your information, that is posted on our website, but I can certainly have it forwarded to you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Banks, are you planning on those budget forums? Will they be virtual, or will they be in person, or will they be both?
That is a good question. I think that's open at this point.
Yeah, last year we did it in virtual because we had to. We are, we will be working with the Health Department in terms of the requirements, but it's likely it'll be a combination of both.
Good, thanks.
There are no further questions. Thank you, Mrs. Banks.
Thank you.
Mr. Watson?
All right, good evening to the board, Dr. Adams to the listening public, Square Watson, Deputy Superintendent of Operations, joined by my team, Mr. Rosman Johnson, Facility Manager, Maintenance Manager, Mr. Anthony Graffin Reed, HVAC Manager, as well as our Environmental Consultants team led by Mr. Jeffrey Faust, Anthony Haggerty, and James Earl. And tonight we'll be presenting the air quality report that was conducted earlier this year. Air quality came to light with the pandemic. There are three entities that provide guidance, the U.S. EPA, CDC, and OSHA, that have established standards to our schools for reopening and during the course of the year, ensuring that we protect our scholars as well as our staff. The district, as we continue and have been, committed to maintain a healthy environment in which our scholars and our students can learn, our teachers can teach, and our staff can have a safe environment to work in. The quality of air, the testing of water, and interim controls for lead have always regularly tested, and any issues, they are corrected, repaired, and/or eliminated. So therefore, ethics and accountability are our highest priority. Alongside with the team, we're able to provide documentation that shows all of our actions. And this information can generally be reviewed through a Sunshine Request so that the public can see those items. So as opposed to what makes a building unhealthy, what makes a building healthy? Increasing ventilation. Our HVAC equipment and our operation are making sure that our HVAC equipment are operational and within the lifespan of the equipment, as well as providing a preventative maintenance plan to ensure that all of our systems work appropriately. The other items are upgrading our filters to a MERV rating, in which the MERV rating captures the filters and the contaminants within those filters. The other item is automation. This allows us to provide controls and monitor the temperatures and humidity levels within our schools and within our classrooms. Other items are to reduce the transmission of the virus, which are generally found from the three entities, the CDC, U.S. EPA, and OSHA, and they are the face mask wearing, the social distancing, continuously disinfecting and sanitizing of our classrooms as well as our equipment, and continuing to replace our filters. Next, we'll explore the multiple types of mechanical systems within the district. We have Supply Central Air, which were originally installed in those inner-designed buildings. These are historic buildings, and they were designed at the time around the 20th century. During Prop S, these systems were upgraded to include air conditioning. The U.S. EPA recommends that this is the preferred mechanical system for schools because they generally perform well and deliver high levels of indoor air quality. The other type of system are heat pump systems. They're more energy, they're more energy-efficient approach to heating and cooling our classrooms and spaces, and you'll see the heat pump schools that are listed. We have 15 heat pump schools. Next, we have our unit ventilator systems. There are more simplified units that provide heating and cooling, however, they don't have any of the ductwork. They generally position in our classroom, the classroom walls, or at the ends of our hallways. And then we have window units and fan core units. So now that we have identified the type of mechanical systems within the district, what we have, what have we done to address the air quality? So earlier this year, the district engaged professional services of environmental consultants and his team, Impact Consulting, to learn and assess, to assess and evaluate the air quality for all of our schools. I will now turn it over to Mr. Faust to provide more information on how schools were evaluated, their findings from their inspections, and their recommendations.
Good evening, members of the board, administration, and folks of the public. I'm Jeff with Environmental Consultants, and as Mr. Watson had mentioned, our firm was engaged by the district to provide indoor air quality services as it relates to the current pandemic. During this process, we looked at all the available guidelines out there. The U.S. EPA is the group that was most helpful, putting together lots of webinars and instructions on how to properly assess schools. We spent a lot of time going through their guidelines, methodologies, things of that sort. We are familiar with schools. We represent a lot of school districts throughout the Midwest. And then also, in going through the U.S. EPA documents, the Washington DC School District did a great job of explaining their pilot program and how they used increased ventilation and virus mitigation in their school district successfully. So this spring, we went out to each of the schools, and we started looking at six critical key indicators that U.S. EPA talked about. The first was basically just the condition, the cleanliness, and the effectiveness of the ductwork in our schools. Is the ductwork blocked? Does it have debris in it? What are we actually pushing through our air duct system? That was the first critical indicator. The second is the filter size and rating in our mechanical systems. As Mr. Watson spoke earlier, the U.S. EPA is recommending a MERV 13 as the minimum level. We also look at general indoor air quality conditions. We measured things such as temperature, humidity, carbon dioxide, and even carbon monoxide. Why is that important? The study done by Harvard last summer indicated that when you have higher levels of carbon dioxide in a school, that the chances of virus transmission go up. So we want to keep carbon dioxide levels low. By doing that, the best way to do that is through increased ventilation. So that's why we took these measurements. Also, in the schools, when we have high humidity, we have the potential for mold issues. So we want to measure the humidity so we can control things like mold. The fourth critical component was the air exchange rates. What U.S. EPA is telling us is that ideally, we want the air to be exchanged six times per hour, and the more air changes you have per hour, the more effective the air will be, the better quality it will be, and you'll have lower transmission rates. Then in addition, because we were doing the testing this spring, we also had to look at the classroom utilization schedules. Not all of our classrooms were fully occupied at the time, so we had to take that matrix into account. Last but not least, the last critical item we looked at was our disinfecting and our sanitizing equipment that the group was doing. The next slide is what does the data indicate? So what were our findings? In the itinerate-style buildings that Mr. Watson talked about, those that have central air, what we found was excellent indoor air quality. What we found were significant levels of air exchange rates. We found low levels of carbon dioxide, and we found that the air was moving quite well through the buildings, thus surprising, thus supplying our students and staff with good clean air. One issue with the itinerate-style buildings has to do with the ductwork itself. These are buildings that the mechanical systems were upgraded in the last 10 years. However, the old ductwork is still original to the building, so over the years, we need to look at cleaning that ductwork into the future. At the schools that have the heat pump systems, what we found is these schools provided a lesser quality of indoor air, and where we found issues in these schools was in higher levels of carbon dioxide. So we spent the summer taking steps to try to better ventilate those schools so that we would decrease the carbon dioxide levels when kids return to school this fall. Also, in the unit ventilator schools, some of those schools had problems with ventilation, with elevated carbon dioxide levels, and the other problem we had in our unit ventilator schools was simply that we could not control the humidity, thus leading to other types of indoor air quality problems. So that's what we found. What do our recommendations look like? In the older itinerate-style buildings, those buildings are supplying us with great indoor air quality. However, at some point, we do need to clean the ductwork in those schools so that we can get rid of harmful contaminants that may be in the ductwork. At our heat pump schools and at our schools with unit ventilators, we need to find ways to increase ventilation and control humidity. Ideally, we want to get humidity levels below 60% in the summertime so that we're not growing mold or other types of allergens. And with the ventilation, the more air exchanges we can get, the better of quality of air we will deliver to the kids, thereby reducing the carbon dioxide levels and improving our air exchange rates. Mr. Watson will take you through our short-term and long-term priorities. Thank you.
So based on the information that Mr. Faust and his team has provided and the recommendations, the team has developed both short- and long-term priorities. The short-term priorities are to continue to inspect, monitor, and test to ensure that levels that Mr. Faust just mentioned are maintained within our schools. Other short-term priorities are to continue to change filters and upgrade to MERV rating filters when possible. Next, we repair, replace, upgrade existing equipment that have not reached its life cycle. I learned long-term priorities for our capital projects include replacing obsolete equipment that no longer can be maintained, and improving our building automation systems, i.e. our controls, which allows us to monitor temperatures in our buildings and in our classrooms. So in conclusion, the district has architecturally beautiful and historic facilities, but due to their age, the air quality, testing the water, and interim controls of lead must be maintained and managed daily. With the preventative maintenance plan that has been developed by the operations team and the facilities department, we will help to ensure that we reduce the contaminants within our schools and protect our assets and our equipment. This will allow for the equipment to be operational for the lifespan and continue to operate in a successful manner. Air quality is a critical part of conversation in even this presentation. This is so that we can ensure that we continue to provide clean, circulated, and ventilated air and humble service of our scholars and our staff within our, within our district. At this time, we will open it up for any questions.
I do have a question in regards to, you talked a lot about the monitoring of the equipment. So at any given point, how do you test the results of the equipment in response to the human element in your schools? Because if some of the older buildings have these concerns, the air quality might not be as good, it's going to affect the students in the long term. And so I just, are we looking at medical records? Are we looking at asthma attacks? Or how are we monitoring the students?
It's a good question. So in regards to our scholars, we don't necessarily look at any medical records. What we do is what Mr. Faust more or less said, is that when we go into those spaces, we check those carbon dioxide levels, we check the humidity levels. We do know that the effects of quote-unquote "bad" quality air emphasizes, and it actually increases the chances of students with asthma and/or some of those allergies. But on our end, we monitor through the control systems, which we're looking to upgrade at this point in time. We are not able to monitor and control all of our classrooms and all of our buildings, but through the SRR funds and particularly in the SRR III funds, we're looking to upgrade a lot of our control systems so that we are able to monitor the humidity, monitor the temperature within those classrooms.
My last question is in regards to the contaminants that we might be considering. I know we talked a lot about lead at your last presentation. So lead, mold, asbestos, are there any other type of contaminants that have come to light?
I believe from prior reports and looking at some of our environmental reports, that seems to be the bulk of the contaminants that are found when the environmental team goes and assesses the buildings. Because of the age of the buildings, of course, the lead and asbestos probably are probably the highest type of environmental concerns, but outside of that, we generally don't have any major environmental concerns outside of the ones you just named.
Thank you. I have a question for you. They've listed several recommendations, and I know, note that you have some short-term and long-term goals, but can you give us the timeframe that we, as a district, plan to, you know, fulfill these recommendations to ensure that we have the best air quality as soon as possible?
So I think, let me just cover that just a little bit, Mr. Watson, because you didn't have talked about it. We have to first let out a RFP to get some proposals back. Part of the presentation tonight was to make the board aware. We will be putting out a RFP. That normally takes anywhere from one to three months, and then hoping January or February, we'll start the process of starting to do some of the work. We want to try to get as close to the summer as possible because we want the buildings to be empty, other than that we'll have crews working overnight to do some of the work that has to take place in buildings. So this RFP process first that we have to follow, and that, as I said before, one to three months for that process.
So is that on all the recommendations or just the first few? Or because I can imagine replacing the systems would take a little longer.
Mr. Watson?
So probably for the first, in terms of cleaning and sanitizing, but we've already been doing work along the way with the lead of our HVAC manager, Mr. Graffin Reed. We've done a lot of replacing and repairing to our systems. So some of these items will require larger funding sources, in particular the SRR III, but for the most part, in regards to like our air exchange rates, even, like I said, just cleaning and reducing the humidity levels, those are things that we're currently doing now to our systems. So in addition to Dr. Adams and the RFP, so that we could tackle some of the bigger projects, we are currently doing and addressing a lot of the concerns in regards to air quality as we speak.
So would you say in the next two, three years, most of these recommendations will be complete?
That is the plan. We will be phasing these projects on an annual, year-by-year case.
And we can provide the board an update on what we've already done and what we're looking to move forward to do.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just curious how things are going in reference to the fall, the heating. I know we're focusing a lot on the summer months and the issues we're seeing with the air conditioners, but how are we going to be prepared with this, the air quality in our heating system? I know in the past that had been an issue, but how are things going with monitoring that as well?
So with our heating season, our heating season actually begins October 15th, this Friday, where we turn on the heat in all of our buildings. And luckily, through the pandemic last year, when we didn't have a lot of students in the buildings, we were really able to address and take care of a lot of repairs that for quite some time, we just haven't been able to address and tackle. So this year, we have a better handle on our both heating and our air conditioning, although we did have some concerns earlier this year. But again, with the team, they did a great job of assessing what needs to be done and making those repairs on the spot. So we currently are and will continue to address and monitor through our control system, through our automation system, as well as our technicians, any heating and/or cooling concerns.
Do we give any guidance to principals or classroom teachers in terms of classrooms where the windows can open? What's the best strategy to open windows, open doors to get increased ventilation?
So when it comes to the fresh air and opening of windows, what we like to do is make sure that our systems are updated and repaired. The other option, which is somewhat provided in the recommendations, is to provide those air purifier machines. That way, that allows some fresh air to kind of come into those spaces, in particular to those common spaces and some of our isolation rooms. But I think in terms of the bigger picture, for us to really kind of take care of those fresh air concerns, is a mechanical upgrade to our rooftop units in the form of they call energy recovery units, and that allows more fresh air to come into the buildings so that we can, even if those windows don't open, we still will be able to have fresh air into our spaces and classrooms.
But in the meantime, while we wait for the RFP process and, you know, SRR III timeframe and things like that, are there any things that, you know, just in the building itself in terms of opening windows, doors, that would be advisable, or is that not something we've considered?
So what we typically would do is have the doors, hallways, all those areas open so that we can allow fresh air into the building. And again, with the heating and cooling team, they have done a lot of repairs to bring in more fresh air. That means they opening up dampers and/or again, making repairs to those energy recovery units. But the idea is that we open the hallways, open doors, and that allows more fresh air to come into those spaces.
And Dr. Adams, I would be interested in seeing the repairs that we've done so far, but I mean, just Mr. Watson, in terms of, I would imagine upgrading filters were available to the MERV 13 or higher. Is that some things that we've been able to do in some of the buildings?
In some of our buildings, yes. There are some buildings, in particular to those heat pump schools, we're unable to upgrade to a MERV 13, but I do believe we're using like a MERV 8.
And in terms of the air purifiers, like portable room-sized HEPA filtration devices, do we have any of those? Have we provided those to any schools?
So yes, we have provided to a few schools, in particular to some of our primary schools, more or less like a pilot, just to see, because at this point, we have a lot of vendors, a lot of technology with the air purifier. So we want to find out which type of device fits our system and works well with our system. So we have began investigating. We have put some in, I would at least say maybe about five schools at this point in time, but the plan is that all schools will eventually have some of those air purifiers, in particular to those isolation rooms and/or those nurses' offices.
And have we investigated, or do we provide any sort of equipment or supplies for any outdoor classroom activities, if possible? I mean, I've seen other schools have put up tents or, you know, put up flexible seating outside to encourage more room. more room in the classrooms or if there's classrooms or windows don't open. Have we done anything like that or have we considered that?
We are. We're actually currently investigating those outdoor learning spaces, increasing outdoor play. And that was part of our SIR meeting today.
Great. All right. Thank you.
I'd like to ask you one last question. First of all, I want to thank you so much for bringing this topic up because it's really, really important, the air quality that we have in our schools. And I just want to remind parents that have children, young children at home, to make sure to get your children lead tested at the health department. And if your child is over six, to remember that lead stays in the bones for over 30 years. And if you have a poor diet, those things are important to remember that we're getting ready to turn on our heating systems. And your child, if their bedroom is closed, if their beds are close to a window, to make sure to Google it or to talk with a professional on how to clean and make their living spaces safe from lead. So I appreciate everything you guys are doing because it makes a difference in the quality of life for our students. Thank you.
So I had a question on, I know a lot of this is, you know, ongoing long term problems, but a lot of it is directly related to the pandemic. And you mentioned S or funds. If we had kind of an, and I know that there is an RFP process, so we're not sure on the exact amount. But if we had kind of an ideal, you know, dream list of things that we want to fix, how much would S or cover and how much would we be covering from our general operating budget? Is is most of this eligible for S or funds, I guess, is what I'm asking?
We believe right now that a lot of it is. We don't have a percentage right now because we're waiting for the RFPs to come in. But we do think a large portion of this could be covered by S or our S or three funds. As you know, the S or two funds are committed to already. But the S or three funds, we are in the process of getting that application approved. And you will see when we come back to you with the S or three that we will be shifting. I won't use the word large, but a significant portion of dollars to cover some of the facility concerns and air quality is one of them.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's hopefully going to cover a lot of our long term issues as well. Lasts a while.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Since the conversation is already a conversation talking about SRL. It's been a few minutes going over S or two. I think I've provided this presentation to the board several times before. So I just want to highlight a couple of slides here that are brand new. I also have a sheet that I want to. Again, SO two is a elementary and secondary school relief fund called E S S E R two. And this is an update. The board has obviously seen a lot of this before. And so I won't spend a lot of time on all of it. Basically, I just want to go a quick background, district allocation, school allocation, academic spending priorities, the S of vendor list, SO two procurement process, feedback and communication, school planning process and data collection process and a timeline. Again, the background again is to cover school districts and addressing the impact of COVID-19. Congress has provided a significant amount of dollars for that to take place with three goals. Safety reopening schools, which we've already done, pre and post pandemic unfinished learning, and build lasting equitable systems of teaching and learning. The methodology here, we received some $46 million in SO two. As you can see, the 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 public, we we did a survey and got some information. And so 55% of the dollars are going to go directly to schools, which represent about $24 million. The academic team itself, meaning the Department of Academic, Chief Academic Officer, receives about $4.4 million. In terms of how we look at the school form, funding formula, all students, based on the population of the school, $875. If a school is free and reduced lunch, those students who identify as F R L, $263. Students who might have I E Ps, $438. And students in transition, some $438 and E S O, E S L students, $438. So each school, based on their population analysis is done and dollars are provided to schools based upon that. And that's the document you just received just now from me showing the school, the breakdown in the categories I mentioned, as well as the final budget for every single school. The academic spending, extra service, professional development and professional learning, Century 21 classrooms, in terms of how do we make classes much more inviting? As we look at STEM and STEAM, maker spaces, curriculum resources, as well as early child education. These are the areas that the academic spending, the 4.4 million that you're looking at, is going to be targeted to spent, spend and the curriculum pieces and other pieces are going to be supported by the school side as well in those areas. A vendor list has been created. We are still, and I want to be be clear about this, we're still working through this process. Part of our challenge, board and community, is that we understand that many of the supplies don't exist. As vendors are trying to get supplies from other parts of the country, other countries as well. So there's been a real challenge around us determining what vendors to use. And you'll be approving some vendors tonight with the hope and belief that we can get the supplies we need from those vendors. But everything is backed up in terms of the the chain of a delivery and those kinds of things. So we we are monitoring this piece very carefully. The communication piece, school leaders and various stakeholders, as I said before, some 3,000 respondents. We had some SO work committees, principal advisory committee, principals received the SO FAQ last month. And the fourth and fifth principals and school teams had some learning sessions about how what what dollars that we're going to receive and how they want to use those dollars. School planning, schools already have a have a academic plan that they put in place. They're going to leverage that academic plans to look at goals and they will be spending their dollars based upon their own academic plans. That will be approved by the academic office through the network superintendents. But the dollars that you see there will have to be approved by the by the academic team. Here to for, prior to these dollars being spent, we will have the building rep as well as a a member of the parent teachers committee to sign off prior to dollars being spent in their budgets. How are we going to monitor this? We are going to look at the STAR data, the Savvas New reading curriculum. We're going to look at that on a monthly basis, also walkthroughs, observations and walkthroughs. We're going to look at a panorama survey, which is a coach, a survey that tells us how people feel about what's happening in the building, staff, students, as well as parents. Student attendance will look at as well. As you might know, with the pandemic, student attendance dropped throughout the state, but it also dropped in our district as well. So we'll be looking at that as well as focus groups to determine if dollars were spent in a way that we indicated dollars were going to be spent. The last document is a timeline and I want to be clear here that this timeline is going to be changed after some meetings today relative to the vendor list and relative to what we need to be ordering and how. I would ask you to disregard the first two sections of the proposed timeline. Sorry, not the first two, but the second one. We are doing a presentation to tonight to the board, but we have to work with schools on this allocation template. So we're pushing some things back because we need some more time, quite frankly, before we are able to start the ordering process without identifying vendors and those kinds of things. So it's still our intent to meet the October timeframe in terms of beginning the purchase purchasing process. It is likely, and I'll just use an example of one thing. We we had some conversations today in our meeting as we talked about this. And Promethean boards won't even be able to be delivered until sometimes March and April. That's how backed up things are. We did hear some information today from Ms. Vanoy that one of our vendors are indicating they might be able to get us stuff as early as January. But it is likely that it's not going to come to March or April. So some of the supplies that we're looking to purchase and order will be delayed. There is no if and buts about it. But we'll keep the board aware of where we are in the process. But the timeline here is going to be delayed because of what's happening across the country in terms of supplies and materials and the ability for trucks to get things to districts. And that kind of way, if you've been watching anything about Christmas, they're asking persons to order now to get any kind of things you want for Christmas. And while we're not ordering for Christmas, but ordering for schools, the delay is going to still be insane. Questions that the board might have relative to this because the board has seen this before. You have the final document that indicates what each school is getting based on our analysis. And so it's really about making the board aware of where we are right now.
I'm not sure if this question was asked before. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm not sure if this question was asked before, but what is the actual timeline on getting these dollars spent?
We have until 2024, 2023, 2023, September 2023.
Okay, so my question is not tied to what we talked about today, but we've had this conversation before about the technology replacement fees that right now, when they're lost, I think it's $75 recovery. So.
If they're lost, they are covering the entire cost, am I right, Ms. Banks? Right now with the new insurance, it is $75, am I correct? For this year, 75. Previous years, it was an entire amount.
Right. But so right now, we have some students that may not, you know, they're having to use instructional packets.
That is correct. That is correct.
So my ask is around that. I just think we have this money here and I don't think that instructional packets are the best educational resource. And I feel like one of our top priorities with this money should be making sure that the students have what they need to perform academically. So I would like to see a recommendation on how we can go about meeting that need, whether it's the money to repair it, the money to replace it. I know in earlier conversations, we estimated that it was maybe going to be around 1.3 million or a little bit more. But I would like us to do what we need to do to make sure that students have what what they need. I know this year we have insurance and maybe it'll be a little bit different. But I think we need to think about those students that are unable to access it right now, especially those who are quarantining and dealing with the outcomes of the pandemic, but in general for our students.
So I'll come back to the board at the work session with the board president and the board's permission to give you a recommendation from administration in that space, if that's acceptable. Okay, so I'll come back on the 28 to provide the board with some information and data. I'll have some current data and I'll come present something to the board at that time. You're welcome.
Dr. Adams, I'd like to ask a question about the panorama results. Will there be a video response or is this just going to be a printed out material?
We can make that request. I can do an update. We didn't do it last year, as you might imagine, because of the pandemic. It was two years ago that we did it. I can check to see if we can have a video presentation. It's basically a data. We can turn that into something that the board can see and the public can see as well.
Well, I know a lot of our students have, do have.
Oh, you're talking about that. Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so.
Is it electronic version is what you're asking for?
Yes, because it's kind of different when you see something on paper, but versus listening to a student actually say how they feel. It's really important to me. I think to a lot of other people in the public would like to see that.
I will check to see if Panorama has a version that allows us to do that. I don't know off the top of my head, but I can inquire about that. And Ms. Dr. Williams is behind me taking notes so we can get an answer for you tomorrow. You're welcome.
Dr. Adams, I have a question regarding what the schools will be, well, not what they're, what they'll be spending the money on. Because we know that there are three goals to safely reopen schools and that's something the district is working on. And then addressing pre and post pandemic unfinished learning. If the schools are are going to be ordering things to address that particular goal of S or funds and all these things are, a lot of these things are delayed. What are we doing in interim to ensure that we address the pre and post pandemic unfinished learning while we're waiting for those tools to help schools improve the learning?
So one of the components that all academic plans will have will be tutoring. And so we will have one on one tutoring. Obviously, we don't need additional dollars to do that. We just see extra service dollars in those schools. Every school will have a component of their plan to have tutoring required as a part of the spin. So you are correct. Some of these supplies and materials we won't get back right away, but we can start spending dollars right away on before care, after care and tutoring. As I discussed with the board and publicly at the last meeting, we are covering tutoring and before and after school care in elementary schools. And at this point in time, 22 schools have agreed to open as early as, I think, Monday or the 18th, they're starting with before and after care. And part of that is a tutoring component in our elementary schools.
Are we going to be, it seems like I read it, but I'm not sure if I if I read it here or somewhere else. Are we going to be extending the school year, this particular school year to, you know, improve in students' learning for the year?
That is not a recommendation at this point in time. It may be one that comes a little bit later, but at this point in time, we plan on having a robust summer school program. As a matter of fact, we are having some conversation with the city. Mr. Pinkney discussing some interest that the the mayor has around a citywide summer school program for all kids in the city, not just isolated sub particular school. So we've been in some short conversations regarding that. So at this point in time, we plan on having a summer school program, but it might be enhanced by desire from the city to expand that in a different kind of way, different than what they've done before. There was a program in New York called Summer Rising that seems to be very successful that covered the entire city. And so there's some interest in possibly replicating something like that in the city of St. Louis. You're welcome.
Dr. Adams, I'd like to take you back to page four.
Yes, ma'am.
The SO two allocation page.
Yes, ma'am.
And just for a point of clarity, all students will get the $875.
So the allocations go to the school. And if I have a school with 100 kids, I get 100 times 875.
Okay, I'm clear with that part.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, when we talk about free and reduced lunch, I E Ps, sit and the Ls, those are additional dollars.
Yes, ma'am. If I have 25, if I have 10 kids that are F R L, you get another 200, 10 times or 2,000, yeah. $630, that's correct. And if the kid also is with I E P, then I'm going to get another $438. Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
So on this long sheet you gave us, these are the counts, the number of students. These are $9. This represents the count.
The dollars are all the way at the end, as I said, as a budget.
Okay, yeah. So that's the total dollars.
That is correct. That is correct.
And I apologize, Dr. Adams. I might have missed this before. But on slide number eight, talking about the approval and sign off to include a PTO president or without a PTO, another parent designee, teacher leader and building steward. Is that a new component that you've added?
We we did that several years ago as it relates to all GOB budgets. We thought that these these were, this was a significant number of dollars. So we put this back in place for this particular initiative. We likely will be moving forward for this to happen for all budgets that come from schools to be signed off in this way.
That's great. I like that.
Thank you. I'll go to the last presentation for tonight, which is an updated back to school report. The intent tonight is to cover really based on October, the last Wednesday in September, which was the last official count for students for the state of Missouri. And so we want to kind of give the board an update based on that date. I think you have the wrong presentation. This is a September 14 one, and I'm looking for the October 12. Now look. Maybe they sent you the wrong one. Okay. 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 So this is an October twelfth report, uh, based on. I walked through, I think it's the wrong one, and so. Um, the board has, and so we'll put it online for the public and apologize profusely, um, but the board, the board has. I'm sorry. Um. Not yet, it normally comes after the board meeting, uh, but the board does have a copy because they gotta receive the copy electronic, plus you have a copy on your desk, so I'll go through it. Um. Number of teachers hired, um, one hundred and fourteen, number of T F A teachers hired, zero this school year. Number of teachers who resigned, eighty-six, number of teachers retired so far this year, eighteen. And the number of teachers terminated, zero, and the number of teachers separated as a result of debt, what uh, or um. A reduction in force would be two, total separations a hundred and six. In terms of that vacancies at this point in time, there are a hundred and eighteen, um, staff vacancies, non-teaching one twenty-four. Principals and assistant principals, zero, a total number of vacancies, two hundred and forty-two. Comparing, speaking, that number is higher than it has been in the past over the last three years. In terms of hard-to-fill positions, our hardest positions to fill right now is special education and regular classroom teachers at the elementary level. That is consistent with what the data that we've seen in the past. In terms of employee relations, uh, we have a reduction in A D A claims, um, and. Um, in terms of liquidated damages, in terms of persons who leave, and they have a contract at thirty-one pending, we've not gone after anybody in that space at this point in time. Because obviously we've been in a notion of trying to get every single classroom filled at this point in time. In terms of uh, leaves of, leave of absence as of October the fourth, forty-eight, forty-five, seventy-five F M L A, ninety-five. Number of completely requests made by the employee employer, uh, five have been, seven have been denied and uh, seven and five pending. Terms of labor management, uh, forty-four issues compared to eighty-two, ninety-two and one fifty-nine over the last three years. And issues resolved around a mutual agreement of about forty-one of the forty-four cases have been resolved. In terms of transportation, which quite frankly has been a real challenge that that's the right presentation. Uh, go to slide nine. Okay, regular routes, a hundred ninety-four, special education, seventy-four, for total buses of two hundred and sixty-eight. Students eligible, sixteen thousand two hundred and sixty-two. In terms of on-time performance, our on-time performance have been, has been similar to what it has been in the past, the biggest challenge, quite frankly. That has impacted that is the transportation has been challenged by a shortage of drivers and driver absences. You have an item being walked on tonight that I'm begging the board to approve, which will allow us to secure another vendor. To take up the gap that exists right now around transportation. It is not unusual every day for me, and I'm sure the board does as well. To get a, get a email or something relative to transportation. The challenge, quite frankly, is that not enough drivers. And so every single day we have a shortage of routes, every single day since the beginning of school year. Because there are not enough drivers, so at five o'clock in the morning, we start getting indications that there are not enough drivers for a particular route. And then we use cabs to go pick up kids and families to get to school. It has been a real challenge for the first half of the school year. I am hopeful that the agenda item that you received tonight will help us address some of the challenges. I don't think it resolves all of them. But I think it will go a long way in terms of significant, significantly addressing the shortages that first student has and. Don't want to blame first student, they have been really great partners and trying to work with us. They simply just don't have enough drivers that are showing up. Um, and are calling in on a regular basis. In terms of uh, food service, um, you can see what the numbers are at this point in time. Last year, this time, it was about twelve percent. Uh, participating breakfast, fifty-three percent, not back to where it was in nineteen twenty, um, and uh. Lunch, and that should be seventy-nine percent, not seven hundred and eighty-nine percent, that is a typo for nineteen and twenty. But right now, we're not back to where we were for lunch, uh, participation as well. It's about, it's about a six percent lower than it was in nineteen. In two thousand nineteen and twenty, and about um, uh, eleven, twelve percent less than it was in two thousand and nineteen and twenty. Uh, the breakfast program increased from last year about forty-one percent. That's very easy to happen. Why? Because we were virtual at the time. And also less uh, participation increased as well because we were virtual last year at this time. Total meals increased from last year now to about a half a million. Uh, we are still doing our grab and go program. Uh, we have less students served. Then then the previous year, twenty-seven schools were open, meal distribution sites, but due to the decrease in participation. The new current operating number is eighteen. We started with twenty-seven, uh, it's down to eighteen because we have less students participating. In the pandemic program, in the grab and go. In terms of what you asked earlier, uh, Ms. Songye, this is the most current data. Uh, the most current data indicates that about fourteen hundred and twenty-five laptops have been damaged, lost or stolen. That have been identified, the cost is about three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, and this was as a week ago. In terms of iPads not return or return, the the um, the return rate is eighty-two point eight last, last month. Uh, I reported eighty-one point two, more have come back. Um, the outstanding cost. Um, was eight hundred and forty-five thousand is now seven hundred and seventy-one thousand for iPads in terms of laptops. Eighty point two percent have returned, last time it was seventy-eight point one. We still have outstanding about six hundred and ninety-two, still outstanding. That cost is about two hundred and ninety-six thousand. Um, the cost last time that I reported to you was about three hundred and nineteen. So using your, using my calculator, it is about one point two, one point three million dollars. If the board makes some decisions or recommendations uh, relative to this cost to do this, the challenge will come to the board, what happens next year? If the same thing occurs, and so I will make a recommendation based on your inquiry to the board at the next board meeting. Um, based on what we see right now, and I have some updated numbers for you as well, because every day somebody's bringing something in, returning something. Uh, uh, pre-K enrollment. You see what the numbers are the last four years, ten thousand. Two hundred and ninety-two, the numbers that you see at the elementary level are significantly lower than they have been over the last three years, and that's because a lot of kids. Made decisions not to come back to school because of the pandemic. This has happened across the entire country, not just in our district, uh, which will be a significant. A challenge for the district moving forward when kids have not had that kind of um, experience in pre-K kindergarten and first grade. Uh, pre-K numbers are down, I think, three to four hundred compared to what they were two years ago. At the six to eight grade level, you can see that the numbers are off about two hundred and twenty kids, not that significant from. Two thousand eighteen, nineteen, but significant compared to twenty, twenty, twenty-one. The high school numbers. Uh, indicate about five hundred students less than they were last year. Um, and the last three years about uh, four hundred um, from two thousand nineteen and twenty. In terms of total enrollment, the numbers are about nineteen oh six, zero compared to about twenty-one, two oh four. Remember, last year, everybody was virtual. So people lied, indicated they were coming back to school virtually for the first. Month of school, a lot of these families didn't stay engaged on a regular basis, so it's really ha- kind of hard to compare. Uh, nineteen, um, twenty twenty-one to twenty, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty twenty-one because of the pandemic nature, but you can look back at twenty-one. To nineteen twenty and eighteen, nineteen to see, but it's significant numbers were in the early childhood space. Questions at the board my head relative to the presentation. I did not do anything on contact tracing and quarantining at this particular meeting. Um, I can't provide the board with that information, it is on our website. I know, Mr. Davis, you asked for the last time, we've been so, so engaged with the. The the uh, vaccine vaccination piece, that it was hard to get it, get all this together. I will provide the, provide one to the board tomorrow, the next day.
Yes, Dr. Adams, I had a question about the uh, enrollment for the younger children, the elementary school age children.
Yes, ma'am.
So has the board continued to have the before care and after care program? Because I do remember going through this at one point in time where if. Um, you have a job and you're trying to drop your child off, or you have, you don't have anyone to take care of their younger child. It might be more cost efficient to do something else. So if you don't, if you have young kids, it's kind of hard.
The board approved at the last meeting for us to put that back in place at our cost, and so in twenty-one schools, twenty-one elementary schools agreed to do before care. After care, I think about ten are doing before and after, most of them are doing after care, but we are covering the cost of that. It effectively starts in every school on eleven one, because we have to secure staff, put a program in place, but some, Mr. Brown, correctly, some started as early as Monday of this week. Will be forecast, some start as early as this week. And we're covering the cost for that for the next two years.
Dr. Adams, I have a question. Um, well, one question might be, um. For the, for CFO, what was our budget, what enrollment number was our budget based on? Yeah, we have nineteen thousand students re- reported, and then last year we had twenty-one. I know there's a lot of variable revenue. So what did we use when estimating the variable revenue and variable costs? What enrollment numbers?
Um, Cheryl, and you might help me with the projected revenue that we use, but I know that. Um, for the S R budgets, we actually use current enrollment data when we are gonna roll out the S R two budgets. But the G O B budgets were actually based on projected revenue that uh, transportation provides.
Okay, and what, and and that projected revenue, when we get revenues based on the number of students we have, if I'm.
Was actually the attendance.
The attendance.
Of the actual attendance of the students, yes.
Okay, so the attendance was li- higher last year than what it looks like this year. Did we base that, that our projections, our revenue projections on attendance? Of last year, which was about two thousand more students than this year, or did we use some average number to project our revenue?
Well, the revenue, uh, most of our general operating revenue, um, that is based on attendance is our state revenue. Which is the smallest piece of our revenue. Our property taxes are the largest piece, which are really not uh, enrollment based.
Okay, well, then that that that's good enough for me to understand that part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we can move to the consent agenda, Dr. Roberts.
I'd like to get a motion in a second to accept the consent agenda for October as presented, ten, twelve, twenty-one, oh, one.
I'd like to make a motion to um, accept the uh, consent agenda from ten, twelve, twenty-one, oh, one. Up through. Eleven, nine, twenty-one, nineteen, and take the bus add-on separately.
I think we might have stopped at ten.
Not November yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Which one was the bus walk on?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
I'm sorry, I flipped the wrong page. All right, so let me restate that. Ten, twelve, twenty-one, oh, one through ten, twelve. Twenty-one, twenty-five. Sorry.
Second.
Ms. Songye. Can we have a discussion, please?
Sure.
Uh, I just had a question um, on ten, twelve, twenty-one, oh, seven. This has come up a few times uh, that we approve. A big amount of money and then later there is more money to be spent, just a few minutes later. A few months ago, we approved this S A S S books for almost three million dollars, and now there's another seven hundred thousand that we're adding on. Um, I just kind of wanted some explanation why that wasn't accounted for before, or did we decide this is a great program and we're gonna invest more? Um, just kind of like to understand that additional expenditure.
Uh, excellent question. The additional expenditures to cover the tier three, we ordered the tier one. Uh, we did not order the tier two and three, it was a transition taking place between two chief academic offices, and so there was an oversight for us to. Um, have the tier two and tier three support that was necessary for those students, and so that's why the uh, increase in the. Um, seven hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, just, it it just seems that it might have been, the the vote might have come out differently had it been a different amount. Altogether, so when we see these come up continually, I almost feel like we're locked into those amounts. But I I see kind of what happened now. Thank you.
Yeah, there was a transition between Dr. Knight and Dr. Smith, and that was where they lost in transition.
And I'd like to follow up on that. That was a question that Donna and I posed to the superintendent at our weekly meeting following this meeting. And the response came out in uh, the summary of that meeting that was emailed to all the board members.
And I would like to add too, um, I had asked about the same thing, and um, there's still a significant savings from what we, what we were doing to. Um, compared to what we're spending for Sabbath, so the savings is really what's reduced. While the budget's going up, our. The savings is reduced, we still have, but it is still s- a significant savings.
Are there any other questions, discussion? Ms. Williams.
Ms. Songye. Yes.
Ms. Cousins.
Yes.
Ms. Fowler.
Yes.
Ms. Fowler.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Dr. Roberts, motion passed. Okay, we're down to um, the walk-on items.
Well, I make a motion that we approve ten, twelve, twenty-one, twenty-six.
Second.
And then for a discussion, if you could just give us, just give the audience more information on who, the, what the additional one million dollars will cover.
So, um. From the beginning of the school year, we have experienced a shortage of drivers and had to use alternative means of transportation for our students. We relied on combined buses in the A M and P M, increased our taxi usage and encouraged parents when needed to transport their own children. Currently, we are short seven permanent drivers, and there is not, there, there isn't enough backup drivers in event that someone calls in sick. Or has to quarantine, and that happens every single day. The driver shortage impacts about five hundred to seven hundred and fifty students every single day. In order to continue to support our students and alleviate the impact of the shortage of drivers, we have scouted for other smaller transportation businesses in the San Luis area. Unfortunately, these transportation companies are impacted by the same national labor shortage as everybody else. We have, we, we have, however, been fortunate to secure one bus company to assist with sports transportation, which will relieve some other transportation. Two other companies operate seven passenger vans, which we are allowed to use. Already to come on board when their vendor registration with S L P S is completed and approved. We will continue to secure other vendors as well, to try to get this done. That's why this is wide open, because we have to try to find people to do this work. So I'm, I I am hopeful that um, we will be able to address some of this, but I'm afraid to. Publicly indicate that it's almost gonna be impossible to solve all of it, uh, but we are working aggressively to try to secure as many vendors as we can and address this issue. We believe there will be a cost savings because we don't pay for the transportation buses every day if they're not coming. So while you are approving an increase in a million dollars, I can't tell you what the savings will be right now, because we haven't received the. Um, our bills or invoices yet from first students, September just ended. Um, August, we still don't have those, and then we go back and check everything, but we believe that there'll be significant savings. Because we're not using the buses as much as we would normally because they don't give us the routes. Um, and we're combining routes on a regular basis every single day, so uh, it's my hope that the board gives us permission to. Um, continue to work really hard to try to find other vendors, and you don't have names here, we checked with legal to make sure that it was appropriate to put it. Wide open, we'll come back to the board with those names, we just don't have enough names right now to tell you, because we've been uh, beating um. Beating the weeds, if you will, to try to find some. I have some names here, but I don't want to say the names, I can be secure this to the board. We do have two or three names that I have listed here, but I want to be careful not to even put those names there until we finish all of this conversation.
So, Dr. I'm just so I understand, so these wouldn't be school bus operators, these would be other types of transportation, like a seven-passenger van.
And we could find some small. We could find some small bus companies that can help us dance, yes. What we're trying to do is, if I'm Kelvin Adams and I'm normally picked up by XYZ Bus, and that bus comes Monday, doesn't come on Friday, we're going to take that route away from that entity, and such that that, so it's like Kelvin Adams could have stable transportation. That van would be coming every day to his door, picking him up and bringing him to school. That would be his route, such that he's not on a van one day, on a bus the next day, and a cab the next day. So we need some stability and securing these entities long-term, because they have, have to also work as well. But if we can fix them on a particular day, at a particular time, picking up a specific group of kids, it will reduce our obligation for that bus, and that kid will have stable, regular transportation that they can depend on. That's the plan right now. We're still working through it, but that's the plan right now.
Dr. Adams, as we bring on this additional transportation, will you communicate or district communicate with them about coming on time, sticking to the time? Because a lot of our parents are saying the buses are late, or they're off schedule, and they have to find alternative transportation. So would that be communicated to any new vendor as well as to our current?
Well, current vendors, as I said before, there's a real challenge, because every morning at 5 o'clock, we get a list of buses that are not showing up. And so it's kind of hard to judge that piece. But the transportation companies that we're looking at right now are going to be obligated to us only, and that we will be their source of income, and they will be our service provider moving forward, which will create some stability for them, stability for our families, and stability for us as well in terms of what we know will happen every day. So we're trying to reduce some of the, the episodic nature of this for some of our families, because it's, it could be bus 502 today. It could be bus 407 tomorrow. It's just that episodic.
Dr. Adams, can you explain to us how these new providers will be vetted to ensure we have good companies working for us?
The transportation director has been, in some cases, working with some of these companies in the past. We also have to make sure that they, as you say, have the license and insurance and all of those things. So we are going to be vetting them, and a contract has to be done that Mr. Sanoma will have to review. But, but basically, we're trying to go after those entities that we worked with in the past that have provided stable service to us in a, in a small degree, limited, a field trip here, going to Jeff City for something here or there. But now we need them on a permanent basis because of the shortage.
Can we get a motion and a vote? Okay. Ms. Williams to vote.
Ms. Song-Yeong. Ms. Cousins.
Yes.
Ms. Fowler.
Yes.
Ms. Vowell.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Dr. Roberts.
Yes.
Motion passed.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda item 10-12-21-27.
Second. Just for information, this came out of the Governance Committee. One of the tasks that were given was to have our board policies revised. And our last government, Governance Committee, we, we agreed that it would be better for MSBA, the Missouri School Board Association, to actually, to contract with them to actually provide the service, so they could not just say what was necessary. They could be in the order that they should be, based on their understanding of how school board policies would be. And they gave us an estimate of what it would cost, and they, they will have, they had the work done by January to present to the board for approval.
I just want to say thank you, Regina, for taking the lead on that. I think that's great.
Ms. Williams. Ms. Song-Yeong.
Yes.
Ms. Cousins.
Yes.
Ms. Fowler.
Yes.
Ms. Vowell.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Dr. Roberts.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda item 10-12-21-28.
I'll give some context here for the board. This is a vendor that we had last year, but this vendor had an issue in terms of responding to the RFP. We are in desperate need of some specialization services. The other vendor is no longer providing the services that they committed to, because they don't have enough staff. This particular vendor has agreed to come in and provide the special services for a high-at-risk population. And so we're asking the board to approve this. I realize this is a walk-on. I realize it's coming at this point in time, but it's for a special set of students to provide some special services to those students that the previous vendor cannot provide because of a shortage of staff. Again, this goes all back to shortages of staff, and so we are, we are required now to look outside of the vendors that we originally had contracts with, because they said, guess what? I can't provide that now, because people are not coming to work, quarantining, and all of the other kinds of things. So Great Circles has agreed to support, I want to say three to five students at this point in time, maybe more. But we need them to provide that service, because other vendors are not able to do so because of the pandemic and their staff issues.
Dr. Adams, do they provide the service in our facilities or in?
In their facilities. We literally transport the kids to those facilities.
And wasn't the one in Webster Groves closed? Is it a different one?
That is a different one. What is that, Ms. Board? Gotcha. Thank you for the clarity.
Thank you.
So our contracts with the previous vendor are still active, or they're terminated, or the amounts are lessened? How, how was that handled with this, if we were to accept this new contract?
Amount lessen. I think one is dropped out altogether. Am I right, Ms. Board? You want to come up, please, to provide some clarity?
So as far as paying for the contracts, we're still paying the full amount of the contracts and receiving the services they're able to give?
Correct.
And so there's no reduction in, in cost for those services, but we just have additional kids that need services?
Absolutely.
Got it?
Absolutely.
Ms. Williams. Ms. Song-Yeong. Ms. Cousins.
Yes.
Ms. Fowler.
Yes.
Ms. Vowell.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Dr. Roberts.
Yes.
Motion passed.
And Dr. can close the consent agenda. Thank you very much, Board.
We're moving into board reports. Ms. Vowell.
No report at this time?
No report at this time. For the Governance Committee, I sent out the onboarding document, and I hope that you all got that to review, because we wanted to approve that tonight if possible. But I need to know if you guys received it and had a chance to look at it. Okay, the onboarding document. So we, to prove it, we would need a motion to approve that onboarding document. And just for those who are out here, an onboarding document is what's created by the Governance Committee under Matt's leadership to help board members to understand what it means to be a board member, and also to help potential board members to understand what it means to be a board member of the St. Louis Public Schools. So we'll go through this training process and provide online information, so that everybody can understand what it takes to be a board member. So if we could get a motion.
Point of, point of order. I'm sorry. Was this on the agenda prior to 24 hours in advance? Because this document was sent out at nine this morning. So in order to have something voted on, it had to have been specifically on the agenda, and I'm not seeing.
I was sure that we would be able to do it through the committee report, so if that's not the case, then that's fine.
I mean, we don't usually vote during committee reports. So, Mr. Sanoma, could you provide some clarity on whether we could vote on this or not?
As a general rule of matter, that is going to be voted on needs to be part of an agenda item that is put on notice to the board and to the public.
Then I'd like to kind of follow up, because the request was made for this to be an agenda item, so I don't know where the breakdown occurred.
MSBA was asked to be put on the agenda for the amount. I didn't get any other requests. I got for the MSBA, because I spoke to the lawyer and got the document, but I didn't get any other requests for anything else to be put on the agenda.
The onboarding was not asked to be put on the agenda. Well, we'll just withdraw it if you guys got to review it. That's fine. We'll approve it at the next. We could maybe put it on the work session agenda to vote on it, because we do vote sometimes at the work session.
If it's duly posted, yes.
Okay, great. Then the other thing I want to report on, as far as the Governance Committee is concerned, we do have a couple other items we're going to be addressing. One is board norms, and then one other item. But I'm going to hold off asking us to meet again until we finish the book review that we're doing with MSBA, because of the number of meetings we have. I'm going to just ask the committee members to allow us to just hold off on meetings until after we complete the book review.
Matt.
Speaking of meetings, the next meeting of the Legislative and Advocacy Committee is next Wednesday, October 20. It's a special meeting with a special agenda. We're devoting the agenda to focus on one of our legislative priorities for next year, which the committee's been discussing, and that is the effects of trauma on our students. So we'll have some invited guests from both here within the district, as well as some community partners. And I, I've met with all of our invited guests. It's going to be a very powerful, important conversation. It'll be live streamed. It'll be open to the public, and all the board members are certainly welcome to attend. I'm, I'm looking forward to it. Oh, one more thing, because this is breaking news. The Board of Alderman, if you may remember, is considering a resolution regarding a moratorium on schools. That has been sent to the Education and Youth Matters Committee. That committee is sensitively going to have a hearing on that moratorium on Thursday, the 21st, at 3 o'clock. So you can check the Board of Alderman website for live stream information. You will be able to testify, any board members that would like to testify, let me know, and I can help assist you to get on the agenda for that with the chairwoman.
Can I say, ask Matt a que, question? Do we know if any of our board members are planning to attend that meeting to testify at this time?
Dr. Roberts is out of town. Ms. Jones gracefully said she would stand in as vice president. I've made myself available. Anybody else that would as well? And I, I was going to discuss with the chairwoman if she needed to have any other additional needs too, but she asked, she said the more the merrier.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
What was the date, Matt? Sorry.
Ms. Song-Yeong.
So the Board of Education, we had a, a strategy retreat where we discussed the citywide educational plan, and we created an ad hoc committee to kind of lead the process in, in developing that. And so Tony has been identified as vice chair, and I have been identified as chair of that committee. Within the next week or so, membership, where we discuss at that meeting, who we would like to participate, will be receiving an invitation via letter and via email, and we will be hosting our first meeting for that, hopefully within this next, this next month. That will be open and accessible to the public. We plan to be as transparent and solution-oriented as possible.
Thank you. I have no board report at this time. We will move to public comments. Thank you so much for your patience. Mrs. Alexander. Just a quick reminder that this is a time portion of our, our board meeting, and each person is allocated three minutes. Ms. Alexander, please.
Good evening. Dr. Joyce Roberts, following our two statements shared in your correspondences to us dated August 9, 2021. In your initial letter, you stated, "Right now, however, as you pointed out, the building is presently for sale." In your revised letter, you stated, "Right now, however," you are incorrect. The building is not presently for sale. Neither statement is accurate. On March 8, 2021, we informed two available board members that Dunbar Elementary was listed as a surplus property for sale. At the board meeting on March 9, the superintendent said, "By mistake, three schools were also listed that were taken down immediately." When I found out about it, Northwest Dunbar and Clay were listed. That was a mistake. We have not in any way stated that the property was or is for sale since that board meeting. With all due respect, at the school board meeting on July 13, 2021, you misinterpreted our reading from an article published earlier in the spring of 2021. Dr. Roberts, you go on to state, "It is our job to ensure that decisions are made in the best interest of all students and support future plans for our school district." It has come to our attention that Atlas Public Charter School has opened a location at 2845 Washington Boulevard, 1.0 miles from Dunbar Elementary School. Our question becomes, how does this action meet the best interests of our students? We know that our students have been removed from Dunbar, and the school is closed. How is this serving the best interests of our students? It would appear by your rationale that the best interests of our students are not served, are, are served, our students are served by not attending Dunbar Elementary. Finally, and again, are we serving the best interests of our students? Or are we trying to spread the charter schools? Are we trying to spread charter schools? In closing, in your letter, you state, "The board stands firm in decisions for school closures." That has proven to be accurately, absolutely accurate, I should say. It is horribly apparent that this firmness is overwhelmingly taking place in communities of color. It is our belief that an error was made in closing Dunbar. It's in a trifecta with three educational institutions. Dunbar Elementary, Bashaun High, and the William J. Harrison Community College. All three are within walking distance. This way, our students can receive, there's a stable learning commu, I'm sorry. This way, students can receive their education in a stable learning community that begins in pre-K and ends with an associate's degree. Our students' education should not be compromised because of political and monetary interests. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Alexander.
I'm going to have an assistant with me. How everybody doing? So I'm going to read from what I wrote down. "A city public, a city public school system is under attack. Thirteen years under the current leadership, devastation of the St. Louis Public Schools has continued. Charter schools have squeezed the financial life out of, out of the traditional public schools. Leadership has failed to correct the problems our schools were having. Instead, leadership has added to the problem by closing traditional public schools, and parents have chosen to send their children to charter parochial and private schools. Charter schools must not replace neighborhood public schools, taking our children from neighborhood schools and busing them to schools and communities that don't look like theirs, or that don't want black children to attend the schools in those communities. We elect a school board that is backing the wrong horse. Jeff Vanderloo is bigger than current leadership. Our children should not be used as guinea pigs by shipping them off in the wee hours in the mornings and busing, and buses dropping them off after supper. Too many of you say we care about the children. Prove it. Can you prove it? Leadership is closing public schools and charter schools." Leadership is closing. Public schools and charter schools are popping up. We wonder why white parents are not sending their children to public schools. Is it because they know that these schools' resources have been defunded? Even though the CARES Act was set up to fund the Title I schools that the superintendent and the St. Louis Board of Education decided to close. The Biden plan has funding for smaller classrooms, and that means less children in a classroom. The Biden plans have funding for hiring good teachers and excellent mental health counselors that would be able to talk with students and work with them with behavior issues. It is unacceptable for our current leadership to close Northside Schools in black areas, as shown here on the map. It is unacceptable to continue to allow schools to open with little regulations and are funded by corporations that back racist policies that are harmful to our existing, to our existence in a country full of Republicans that want black and brown people's votes to count. That don't want our votes to count. Pardon me. With that said, may I have another minute or so? Can the board amend that? Thank you. With that said, former St. Louis Public School Board President Dorothy Rhodey Collins was quoted in the St. Louis Post Dispatch. She said, "There just isn't a coherent cohesive plan for what education in the city looks like." There's so much money that's pouring into sustained fragmentation, buildings and transportation, duplicate services, administrative salaries, marketing, and it's coming at the expense of the kids. What we need to do is reinvest in the schools we have, we have. With that said, invest in restoration and preservation, preservation, thank you, preservation of our community. Invest in our black children by giving them high-quality education. Our ancestors died for that. Children deserve to receive high-quality education in their own neighborhoods, in their own traditional neighborhood public schools, to retain their sense of dignity amongst their own heritage and culture. Don't allow charter schools expansion here in St. Louis that has proven to fail in other parts of the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
We thank you also for your time. Thank you.
Mr. Jonathan Michael. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I think I'm before him on the list. Ellie Gund. Yep. Yep. Hi, I'm Ellie Gund. I'm a science teacher at Gateway Middle. I'm coming in because there is a staffing crisis in this district and not just for bus drivers. It is an emergency, and the board needs to treat it like that. We knew coming into this year that students would need increased academic support, emotional support, and mental health support, and yet we returned to buildings where none of that increased support was in place in terms of increased staffing. In fact, my school started the year with five certified teacher positions unfilled and now has 13 certified teachers' positions that are unfilled. Teachers are overworked, underpaid. The district continues to add more responsibilities to our plate despite more and more teachers resigning every day because they are burnt out. This is not sustainable, and if the board does not treat it like an emergency, like the emergency it is, it will continue to spiral because as more teachers resign, the teachers who remain have to take on more and more responsibilities, more and more students in their classrooms, more and more trauma from these students being abandoned by their educators who cannot handle the situations in the schools anymore. It is an emergency. I suggest you raise subpay. You start asking central office staff to work from buildings so that they can cover classes when there are teachers out for quarantine or for illness. And I would suggest that Board of Education members, if you can, spend a day or two subbing in the school district, see what the situation is like for teachers on the ground, contribute to solving this problem. We are under tremendous stress with the pandemic, and operating like business as usual is not going to solve this problem. Only taking urgent action to fix the staffing crisis will ensure that students have a safe, equitable, and excellent education. Thank you.
Michael.
Good evening. I'm Michael Johnigan. I'm the, one of the academic instructional coaches, also at Gateway Middle School. And I'm going to be covering a lot of the same grounds that Ms. Gunn just covered because, as she said, we're in a moment of crisis. I want to speak about the students and teachers at Gateway Middle School right now because on any given day, we're already operating short of staff. And much like the bus company, we have teachers every day who are calling into work, some because they're sick, some because they're exhausted. When that happens, we do not have coverage for every classroom. So in complete violation of COVID protocols, and in a way that makes contact tracing much more difficult, students are being doubled up in other classrooms. This is leading to large, unsafe class sizes, classes, class sizes that cannot be safe according to any COVID protocol. It is leading to additional teacher exhaustion for the teachers who do show up at work because they're not only having to teach their own lesson, but manage the behavior of sometimes eight or nine or 10 additional students. The, as Ms. Gund mentioned, the demoralization starts to become a chain reaction as teachers who remain begin to feel abandoned and left behind. The relationships that are the foundation of any successful school, and especially any successful school, serving students who have been historically marginalized and underrepresented, are falling apart. Relationships between teachers and students, I have seen teachers who have never had an issue with building student relationships unable to find the time to build the relationships because they're spending their planned periods subbing for their colleagues who are not there. The relationships between students are breaking down because teachers are not able to build an environment that is safe for students to take the social risks that it takes to build meaningful relationships with their peers. This is leading to an increase in violent incidents in our schools that also add additional trauma to what students are already bringing with them. The fact that this is now, as of this Friday, being exacerbated by the inexcusable additional cuts to staff as a result of the district's vaccine mandate, which is, as I understand it, not actually taking into account any religious exemptions, is going to leave us two additional teachers short starting on Monday. We do not have people to fill those positions. As an AIC, a title-funded position, I am prohibited from subbing in classrooms, but have had to do so because otherwise there are class sizes that are getting impractically large, where there's not enough desks and tables for students to sit at. This is a plea for help. If you cannot provide us with the additional staff, we need a virtual option because we know students and parents want it, or we need alternative scheduling so that there are fewer students in the building on any given day. This is not sustainable. Every district in this country, and I think especially this, already runs on the free labor of teachers. That labor is not, it may be free, but it is not inexhaustible. Thank you.
Nick Lemon.
I want to address the business component of Better Futures. Opportunity Trust is not the only Goliath Maxine Clark co-founded. She is a founding board member of the Regional Business Council. The Regional Business Council consists of 100 of the area's CEOs. Their first priority: education reform. That's why they gave $50,000 to Opportunity Trust in 2019. That's their idea of reform. They gave $76,000 to KIP. Three executive board members are also on the board of KIP. $25,000 to Northside Charter School. Kathy Osborne, regional business council CEO, praises Maxine Clark in 2014 at the Children's Educational Alliance of Missouri Awards Gala. Children's Educational Alliance promotes charter schools. They reimagine education like Opportunity Trust does. 2018, Maxine is the sponsor of the alliance's gala fundraiser. Rex Singfeld is the champion presenting sponsor. Other sponsors are Centene Corporation and George Herbert Walker III, W.'s great uncle, and Slay and Associates. Slay and Associates is run by Laura Slay, and she is the director of SEEM as well. Previous clients include Better Together and the Show Me Institute, both funded by Rex Singfeld. According to the Daily Mail, Build-A-Bear had three product recalls in 2011 for lead paint and choking risk, and was also fined $6,000 by the Consumer Product Safety Commission. Maxine promotes herself as some kind of captain of industry like Andrew Carnegie or Henry Ford. P.T. Barnum is more like it. Maxine got rich selling overpriced Chinese stuffed animals to children. She sold experiences, like the experience of cash leaving your pocket and into hers. First Build-A-Bear, now build a nonprofit. They're assembled from the cheapest artificial materials stuffed with cash and marketed heavily. I can hear Maxine now. Now, Mr. CEO, what do I have to do to put you in the nonprofit of your dreams today? I got a stripped-down model on South Jefferson. Education equity. No frills, but good reliable equity and inclusion will get you where you want to go. We have the Rolls Royce of nonprofits, Opportunity Trust, supported by the biggest foundations and banks in St. Louis. Filthy rich people, so you know they can be trusted. The builders have added plenty of upgrades to the original model. Something in the middle? I know just what you need. Forward through Ferguson, still backed by the 1%, but with that popular minority look that is so important nowadays. A two-tone model, white on top, black on the rest, white interior, platinum grill. Build a charter, same thing. Corporate-run government has been a disaster for Missouri, especially St. Louis and SLPS. The big business opposition to public schools has seemingly infinite amounts of money. They control politicians, the legislature, charities, and foundations and nonprofits. It's daunting, but we still have voting. That's why City Fund targets elected boards. They don't want voting. We need to organize citizens to save American-style public education. Thank you.
Yes, Board Member Superintendent, my name is Alice Crockett. I've been in our district for 20 years. I'm currently at two schools. I'm here on behalf of the teachers, paraprofessionals, bus drivers, nurses, counselors, and other staff members in our school district. We request that SLPS School Board amend their vaccination or termination policy to include the allowance of mandatory weekly testing as an alternative. As per President Biden's recommendation, which for all employees with 100 or more employees, to ensure their workforce is fully vaccinated or require any workers who remain unvaccinated to produce a negative test result on at least a weekly basis. Testing will keep our students and coworkers safe and protected. If St. Louis School Board is truly concerned about the welfare and education of St. Louis children, we will not continue this program of firing employees. If the goal is to minimize the disruption of student learning and facilitate smooth school operations, this policy actually does the opposite. We are already extremely short-staffed. Yesterday at one of my schools, we were seven staff members short. That is before the firings that have already started taking place. I have a letter here from one of my teacher colleagues dated October 11, and it says, oh my, and it's regarding termination. And it says that she is terminated currently. Her final date is October 16. She received this letter yesterday. I have another colleague that's been terminated today. So there are terminations taking place because of this policy. How many others will be terminated? SLPS, we are in currently need of over 200 employees. Dr. Adams mentioned it. This directly affects the quality of education. Student safety and well-being will be negatively affected with additional firings. This extreme shortage will be exasperated with additional losses of qualified and experienced teacher staff, nurses, counselors, and other personnel. We want to be here. These are our children. We care about our students and colleagues. It's not in the best interest of our children, parents, and district as a whole to terminate trained personnel for not being vaccinated when testing is available. President Joe Biden stated this September 9, "Increased testing is available, affordable, and convenient. We even have home testing available." Testing would allow employees to verify they are COVID-19-free. I applied for a religious accommodation twice and was denied. I may have just another moment. St. Louis Public Schools is the only district in St. Louis area terminating employees who are unvaccinated. All the other districts in St. Louis area are approving exemptions and/or allowing employees to test for COVID on a regular basis. The union has said that members support the COVID policy, but they didn't call, they didn't contact, they didn't take a vote, they didn't have a meeting to discuss COVID-19 vaccination policy with their members. We have signed petitions supporting our requests that I have. Please amend COVID-19 policy to remove unpaid leave and/or disciplinary action, including termination, allowing for teachers, custodians, bus drivers, and staff to complete COVID-19 testing on a regular basis. Board, why can't we test? We want to work. We want to be here. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm speaking in regards to board policy, COVID-19 employee vaccination policy, P. 4624. I wanted to know if the board is aware of the break. Human Resources is denying exemptions, and the questions are asking. I, along with coworkers, have been denied our exemptions, both medical and religious, with no explanation. We have no problem with accommodations that were presented with twice-theas weekly testing. But being denied with no reason is a problem. I have been a music teacher for St. Louis Public Schools for 14 years. In that time, I have advocated for our students in the arts. I have earned over $25,000 in grants and donations for my classroom. Our school has relationships with the St. Louis Symphony, Jazz St. Louis, and other arts organizations. I have brought both in-person and virtually musicians from a variety of different backgrounds and from around the world. I have former students who are now at UMKC studying oval performance. He was accepted into some of the top music schools in the country. But this doesn't matter anymore because I'm afraid SLPS will deny my exemptions again. I do not think our Board of Education understands what is going on in these buildings. You only hear from Dr. Adams and our union. But even the union is not listening to its membership. Some of us do have reasons for not getting vaccinated. I guess I'm just frustrated with St. Louis Public Schools. Growing up on the East Coast, our town's teachers were there for life. Many of the teachers went to the same school they were teaching in. I wanted to be like my teachers, stay as long as I can. stay as long as I can. My math teacher spent 43 years teaching in the same school district that he attended as a child. I want to be him. If things keep moving the way they are, I don't know if that's possible. I have a six-year-old at home and a husband that relies on me for insurance. What am I supposed to do? I'm going to ask you, what would you do if you were in my situation? What would you do? Thank you.
That concludes our public comment. Is there a motion to close?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Song-Ye. Ms. Cousins.
Yes.
Ms. Fowler.
Yes.
Ms. Fowler.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Dr. Roberts.
Yes.
We are adjourned.